Okay, we're gonna wait a few minutes to, we don't have enough to start a quorum here anyways, so we'll wait to see who else joins here. And they're slowly joining. Just, you know, we're still waiting. We don't have a quorum. Lisa, you and I are the only ones. We need at least four board members to be present in order to start the meeting.
Okay. How long do we wait?
Well, we're gonna try to contact the others. And so there, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Okay, we now have three.
Dick says he will make it. Hold on a minute.
Okay, we do have four. I'll wait a couple more minutes till I'll everybody else to get in, and then at least we'll get started. They can always join. Later on in the meeting. I just hesitate to, with the items that we have on the agenda, to have four members make a decision as opposed to a better number.
I agree, Dave.
Yeah.
Okay, is Meredith on?
No, we're missing Catherine, Meredith, and Richard.
All right, Meredith went to, we were both on together. And it was through our MPSV dot school and the Google, I don't know. So she was gonna log off and try to get onto this to find out what's happening. Like, Mark, maybe you could send her the same link you sent to me just now?
And Dick, he said he's waiting for someone to give him access.
I just did, so.
Okay, we have, Richard is waiting for access, so we know that. So we're in contact with him. And as long as you've spoken with Meredith, we know at least those two will be able to join. I'm not sure about Catherine. She, we know that she wasn't able to come to the office where she had been coming the last several meetings. So I'm not sure she'll be able to log in, but.
Kathy and I were both on a completely different link that was sent by Lori last week. So we're not quite sure what happened, but it looks like Kathy's there.
And we got you, and we're just waiting for Richard then. I'll give him a couple of minutes to get in here.
Love the map, Dave.
Yeah, thanks. Well, you know, you gotta repurpose things sometimes. And this was an opportunity. Even though I never watched Scooby Doo in my life, and my children missed it because of their age bracket. So all I know is what I've seen on, you know, YouTube or something, or in a comic book. But it wasn't, it was never a part of my life, but other than
Really, you're
A pair of shorts. I'm too, I'm older than, than Scooby Doo. When Scooby Doo came around, I was already beyond that. I was watching other things. Let's leave it at that. Right. Okay, Richard has joined, so I will call the meeting of the Manitowoc Public School District Board of Education to order. It is 12:06 PM on Tuesday, July 28th, and we'll begin our meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Then I'll ask our secretary to take a role.
Lisa Johnston.
Here.
Dave Nichols.
Here.
Richard Nitsch.
Here.
Meredith Soward.
Here.
Catherine Schlul. Elizabeth Williams.
Here.
Kathy Willis.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, then now we'll need to have action taken on the minutes from our July 7th meeting. I would need, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
I'll move, approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any changes or modifications to the minutes? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. I have no communications to report, other than I would guess that, like myself, many of you have received correspondence from community members, parents, whoever it might be. And I hope that you had the opportunity to look at all of those and to consider that. And if you choose to respond, remember you're doing it as an individual board member. Not as, you're not speaking for the entire board, but you do have the opportunity to respond to people. So that's entirely up to you. But, but obviously, we have an item on the agenda that is very passionate to some people, and we need to understand that when we make a decision. Anytime we make those kinds of decisions, they probably have a bigger impact than some other things that we do. So, so I'll leave it at that till we get to that issue. Otherwise, I'll move on to committee reports, and we would have a curriculum committee report. And Meredith, you are the chairperson.
Yep, so we met last week and had two main things that we discussed. The first was looking at the results from the survey out to parents about distance learning. And that has since been put out on the district website for folks to view what those responses were. We, you know, we had some interesting data points that, that we did discuss, one of which was that 93% of the people who responded said that they had reliable Wi-Fi and internet access. But it was an online survey, so, you know, those, those kinds of things have to be taken with a grain of salt. You know, we got excited, 93%, but again, when it's an online survey, those are the people who are responding are the people with the reliable internet. So, but the other larger statistic of note is that when it was talked about confidence in the online learning or the distance learning, between strongly agree and agree, that was 71% of the feedback said that they had confidence in that learning. So I thought that that was interesting and timely given our, the rest of our meeting today.
Right.
Again, those results are out on the district website. If you want to peruse through there, they're, they're interesting. I would encourage you to do that. The other main thing that we talked about was the school showcase and how we have schools present themselves throughout the year. And Pam and Jason have done a really great job about kind of recalibrating what that looks like, and specifically looking at presenting what action plans each school is working on and looking at what their goals for the year are in regard to that action plan. So they, you know, kind of organically are defining what some of those, you know, quote unquote deficiencies may be in each building, and will be addressing that through their goals, and then be presenting what those goals are, as well as, you know, having some fun bragging points and, and being able to shine the things that they do really well. So I think it'll be a more comprehensive type of showcase for each building to be able to, to give us. So those were the two main highlights out of the report. Are there any questions?
Okay, seeing no questions, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the curriculum committee report.
I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that report is approved. Move on to the report of the superintendent, and the first item on that would be our personnel report. And that would be Joyce Greenwood.
Thank you, everyone. So in, in Board Book, you would have access to the Personnel Report. There is no addendum this time, so it is just the one that was in Board Book, probably late last week. Any questions?
Joyce, I would just have a question on the positions that were, were repaying stipends. Will those positions be fully utilized depending on what type of reopening we have? Or will there not be sufficient work for them if we come up with a plan that doesn't utilize their position?
Yeah, that's a great question. I know that in the, for these stipends, like these tech ambassadors, there is language, you know, in the agreement that they will receive or the contract or the agreement that they receive that talks about, you know, the agreement is null and void. I don't know the exact language, if the work is not actually performed. So, you know, if, if it were to happen that, again, depending on the model and how the school year plays out, that there is no work or very limited work, you know, we can modify those based on the language in those agreements.
Sure, thank you. That, that effectively means their position is at will. You know, so that's all I really wanted to know. I'm, I'm supportive of the positions as we need them. But, and I understand that we have to fill them. We can't all of a sudden decide the day before that, well, we need this person, so. So I understand that. Thanks for your
Yeah, great question. Great question, yeah.
Okay, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the personnel report.
I've got one other question for Joyce.
Okay.
Joyce, you know, I probably asked it last year as well. In regard to resignations, is there, you know, a, a date in place that after, you know, such and such a date, that there would be a penalty for, for late resignation? And I'm just wondering, what is that day? We must be coming close.
Yeah, so the first date is anytime after June 15th. There is a second date. Oh, and I can, I can get back to you for sure, Dick, but I want to say it's after August 1st. They pay a little higher amount.
Okay.
And then if it's after the start of the school year, it's an even higher amount. So absolutely, it's a release of contract. But again, that, that would be anytime after June 15th, that somebody signs a contract and resigns.
So there was a, for the resignations that you have documented, there was a penalty in place?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Joyce.
You're welcome.
Joyce, how have the exit interview has been going?
Yeah, good. I have not probably looked in the last week or week and a half, but absolutely, any of our, this year, our focus, I think I've shared with you, is we're sending, you know, sending that to all teachers that either resign or that retired earlier on. And I want to say the last time I looked, probably have about a 60-some percent participation in, in completing those exit interviews. So I think once we, once we go into like September, I'll put a presentation together and share that, you know, initially with the Personnel Committee, the, the results of, of those exit surveys.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Lisa.
Okay, again, then I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the personnel report.
I so move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Joyce. And then we'll move on to our return to school update, and I'll turn that over to Superintendent Hutzman.
Thank you, Dave. We're here today to provide you with just an overview again. I'd like to walk you through some slides, just to make sure that every board member is in the same place, has the same opportunity to ask questions, and share the presentation, hopefully that you had at least some chance to see at least over the weekend or back recently. If at any time you have some questions, stop me, and I will absolutely make every effort to address all of those. So I think that's the place to start now. I'll take a couple breaks into the presentation, and then we can have conversation slash question and answer through that process and at the end. I'm gonna, I'm gonna press my screen so that we're all looking at the same presentation. We've talked a little bit before about our collective commitments, and that was our, our goals in order to identify our targets and how we wanted to return to school. I'll share a little bit with you about our recommended learning options, the safety protocols, you know, how we got here, and the socially wellness, emotional wellness piece that's appropriate for us to consider. Finally, the next steps and where do we go from here? When we talked about our collective commitments, we identified five, people first, equity for all, focus on learning, data-driven decisions and collaboration. Those aren't in a specific order, but as I address those, you'll probably understand how we got to identify those. Obviously, in a pandemic, opening school is something that safety and well-being of our students, staff, and larger community is important. And we, we are committed to providing our students, staff with that safe and welcoming learning environment. We talked about that a year and a half ago, and we had safety grants. We're concerned with the safety in a different aspect, not in our health aspect, but in our physical safety. Made some adjustments, and again, we want to make sure that we can provide a safe and welcoming learning environment. We understand the challenges in, in returning to school, and we want to provide options for our families and staff in that purposeful, flexible, and responsive to health-changing environments. We know that where we are today on the 28th of July will be different than what it looks like on August 28th. But we have to do our best to make a decision of what we're going to do today. When we talk about equity, it's an absolutely important piece. It's on our agenda to talk about again. We, we are committed to providing educational resources to make all the staff and students feel welcome and accepted in their school to help them reach their successful potential. And we're committed to providing supports to students who need additional support, and staff as well. And it's an important piece of our considerations. One of the things that we have to identify is absolutely have to have a focus on learning. And so our goal was to make sure that we identified processes so that the academic, social, emotional learnings are met. We want to make sure that we provide standards-based learning target and regular feedback. We know that helps instruction. We are committed to data-driven decisions, and we've used multiple data sets. We'll share again today some of those multiple data sets, specifically when we're determining instructional models, the operational practices, health and safety protocols. And, and these help support our short and long-term goals while maintaining the fiscal responsibility. Obviously, we've got a budget to maintain, and we have to continue to keep that in mind. We're continued to collaborate regularly. We had four collaboration sessions last week. We continue to try to provide opportunities for our staff and our parents to give us feedback. Obviously, through email and phone calls, I'm sure you've received lots of conversation and communication. We want to make sure that we provide you with regular updates and listening, adapting, and influencing that educational model the best we possibly can. So we shared with you earlier the timeline. Today is the last of the timeline. That was two weeks ago, believe it or not. We gathered the feedback specifically from the spring distance learning. We heard about that in the Curriculum Committee. The returning to school in July, we shared that data. We had feedback forums for staff and parents. And we continue to have regular conversations with our local health providers, our state providers, work with the CDC, the DPI, DHS, in making sure that we're having conversations. In addition to that, other school districts and professionals. We know that currently, the, the concerns presented by COVID-19 and pandemic have an increase in our local and regional cases. and that's something that we're aware of. Just a quick overview on our survey results. We know that when we did the survey back in June, beginning of July, we had a number of staff, or fifty-seven percent of our families said that they were comfortable or very comfortable. Seventeen percent said that they weren't ready to send their kids back at all face-to-face. Our staff comfort, top comfort level was thirty-nine percent in a blended model. We take the top two pieces and say very comfortable and comfortable. The number-one concerns or priorities of our families were the academic progress of their children and student and staff safety. For our staff, their top concerns were the compliance to those health and safety protocols that we're working on, and the unloans of returning to job in a COVID-19 section, in addition to the cleaning, disinfecting practices that we have in place. We'll share those. When we talk about regional health data and what kind of information we're, we're using, there's probably four areas right now that we focused on. There's many other pieces that we can talk about, and we'll talk about a few of those. Number one is the activity level, and the activity level is based on data that the state shares with each county. And that, right now, Manitowoc's activity level is high. There's a high, medium, and low in activity level, and that's something that we are constantly following. The access to healthcare, so again, there is another resource from the county and the state that provides the region with the access to healthcare. The ability to contact trace is our ability to identify an individual who potentially has been in contact with or has tested positive, and being able to go back and, and respond to those people who that person may have been in contact with. Then finally, the ability to quarantine, and that's the ability to, whether it's adults or children, and identify those students who, or adults who may have been positive, and then reduce those students or adults from our school environment so that we can keep people safe. Obviously, the challenge there is balancing the public health with the safety and educational, the working parents, the childcare, and the social, emotional wellbeing. That's why this is a very difficult decision, and we're trying to do the best we can to balance all.
Mark?
Pause here and answer questions.
Good. Mark, could I ask, please, okay, how, okay, the basis for this high level of activity, is that based on like our, the amount of people that we have in the county? I mean, are, or how, how do they determine that?
So there's a state website, and I don't have it, I might have it up that I could show you. Let me just take a quick look here. Okay, so because I'm still sharing my screen, maybe you could share with me if in fact you can see that? Okay, so, Elizabeth, this is the data point, and it comes from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. And so the Wisconsin Department of Health Services provides this information, and it has the count, and that's this number right here, the burden, and then a high, what your burden is and your activity level. So it is a little bit complicated, and so I'll try to be brief in this. But if we move to see Manitowoc, we see that Manitowoc is here, and it'll say, here's our count. Here's our burden. This is what they say we're high. The trajectory, meaning it's up and down. We're trend, and then we're in activity level high. If I continue to go down and share with you the information, the burden is the cases per one thousand, hundred thousand Wisconsin residents. So it's, will allow you to compare Manitowoc with Green Bay, with Milwaukee, with some other small community, because, you know, Manitowoc, let's say, has fifty thousand residents, and, and somebody else has a hundred thousand residents, that's how you compare that. So that's where that is. And then they will give you the burden status. Low is your case rate equal to, or less than ten. Moderate, so there's a mathematical figure they use to determine that. Trajectory is either shrinking or growing over a seven-day period. So they take trajectory in that case. They say, if your trajectory in change in cases is equal or negative to ten percent, you're shrinking. So if you have ten percent less than you had seven days ago, you're shrinking. If you have ten percent more than you had seven days ago, you're growing. Anything else is no significant change. So Manitowoc is a no significant change. In terms of the burden status, our case rate is greater than one hundred, so we'll see that if you go back up to Manitowoc here and you see Manitowoc, our case rate count, okay, that puts us in the high level. Then, if you use the activity level, the activity level is a combination of the burden and trajectory. So they give you a low activity level, a medium activity level, and a high activity level. So they'll say if your burden is high and your trajectory is no significant change, your status is high. So that's how they determine it. So it's not just one number, if I had to articulate that. It's a multiple, it's multiple numbers. Does that answer that?
It absolutely does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that so far? I'll keep moving forward.
Mark, the survey was done before we saw this spike in cases. So do you think that the survey would have come back relatively the same? Or would that have changed now, given these new increase in numbers?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, here's what I would tell you. If we are going to make a decision on the survey, what I would tell you is that we had three thousand, I want to say, I have to look back, I could probably pull that up. We had a number of parents. I think we had half. We felt like we had half of the parents. And anytime you, you're trying to get survey data, you have to use that as some absolutely statistic based on the feedback we saw. There was, you know, seventeen percent said they weren't comfortable at time, fifty-seven percent said, hey, I'll take the blended or I was comfortable with the face-to-face or, or very comfortable. I, I would say, yes, the, the model will change. How much? I'm not sure. It depends on who filled out the form, and do they have differences of opinions? You know, I would say the feedback that I saw on the parent feedback and the feedback that I'm getting in email are at both ends of the spectrum. Either we should be one hundred percent virtual, or we should be one hundred percent face-to-face, and not a ton of, it should be something in the middle. So that doesn't mean that I don't think people have an opinion about being in the middle. I just don't know that there is boisterous on one end or the other, I guess. Again, those are just opinions. When you're looking at data, hard to know. The numbers we know is different than it was when we took the survey. But fifty-seven percent and seventeen percent and thirty-nine percent doesn't indicate a great, you know, a lot of people who were really passionate one way or the other, right? If you say the highest fifty-seven percent isn't a overwhelming positive in one area compared to seventeen percent or thirty-nine percent. So, you know, is it, it's possible that it would trend differently? I'm not sure if it would trend significantly differently, you know, does, if we did it again, and you've got fifty-two percent or that said that, or forty-nine percent, you know, or forty-seven percent. I, I'm not sure if that puts us in a different position. I still think there are people who are confident that we should come back one hundred percent face-to-face, and there are people who are confident that we should come back one hundred percent virtual. I guess that's a long answer to say, boy, I'm not sure, but, you know, I've gotten some feedback that said I might answer differently.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, I've got a question. You, you just presented a slide on regional health data, and, and you also recently sent us a a memo with a tentative matrix for making decisions in regard to increasing or decreasing face-to-face. On that, on that document, you make reference to MPSD threat level. Is that the same as a regional health data, or, or is that more specific to Manitowoc? Or could you tell me if there's a difference?
Yeah, so what I was attempting to do, and we have been working hard over the last three weeks, is to try to pin down data points that we can use to move from one model to the next. And what I can articulate is we're having a really hard time pinning down the data. The regional health professionals give us some very good guidelines, but there really isn't any data points. California actually state did create data points, and we're, we continue to hear that Wisconsin might help provide some more information, and that's supposed to be coming, but we haven't seen it yet. So the data point that you're talking about was an internal data point that we may have to consider based on the number of positive cases if we would return face-to-face at all in our district. So for example, you know, if in fact whatever this, the community has is something that we definitely need to consider when we're returning. But if we return face-to-face, and there is a number of cases that happen to be positive in our buildings, that's something else that we're going to have to take into consideration, which is not something that is in this regional matrix. Does that make sense? But there isn't any, like, again, we work, we, this group has been working nonstop for the last fourteen days. We have not found one school district that has identified, here are the absolute trajectories we're using, and we tried absolutely up until probably five-thirty last night to find some. Now, I have some new data points that is the research from Harvard, but it's, you know, again, there, we haven't gotten anything perfect. But what I can tell you is that there's lots of really good data points that we can use, and I can share that later on in some of the slides. It's not like we don't have anything. It's just there's not one data point that you can use and say, this is, it's Manitowoc or everybody. So activity level is something that the state puts out, and every region is using and looking at that. So that's one that we have. But there is also others like the percent positive. There's others like in the number of cases and the access to healthcare, your ability to quarantine. Those are all factors that we have to consider. Having said that, if we did come back, we also have to consider our own health in our community, meaning if there are tests positive, that's something that is not going to be a regional data point that we have to consider.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Yep. All right, I'm going to keep moving here, and then if you have more questions, let's feel free to stop me. I can't see yous right now, so I'll just keep going here. Okay, so this just kind of talks a little bit about where, where are we now? And what I want to articulate with is that we started our conversation trying to provide the opportunities for our students to be back in school face-to-face. We do believe that that's the best educational model. But as we looked at the health of our community and where we are with our ability to consider healthcare, we decided, or are recommending, that we not start the year in a hundred percent face-to-face traditional model. So our team then focused more on the full-distance learning or blended learning. And again, we're continuing to look at that research to identify those pieces. What I would say in that model is that our goal is to return one hundred percent face-to-face. Let me just, sorry, I can put this larger so you can see it. And, and that's always our goal, and we will continue to review those multiple data sets, and we'll talk about those as we move forward on a weekly basis and consult with county and local health in order to make sure that we are providing a safe environment. The data sets that we talked about, again, include that local activity data. That's what we've shared. The percentage of positive cases, another quality indicator that lots of people are using. The Badger Bounce Pack talks about the number of consecutive days with no new, new cases or reduced cases as a third piece, or continue to look at that as well. What I do want to articulate to you is that if we do start in a full blended model, it will take us a transition period of up to four weeks specifically to shift from that whole face-to-face model. There's lots of pieces. Most of that shift will occur, the timing is up in the secondary levels because of the courses that they're involved with. The high school, because there's credits that they have to take. In order for us to move from a blended full distance to a full-distance model, that can happen relatively quickly. We've done that before. We've done that in March, and we can return pretty quickly. But if we are going to go from a full virtual to a blended model, or from a full, a blended model to a full face-to-face, we're really looking at a transition time up to four weeks. We probably can expedite that at our elementary level, but I think there's also some communication pieces that would need to happen with our families to give these people in our community ready time to make some adjustments. The full-distance model, we started back in, in March, and we finished in June. We do know that the Google Classroom was the model we used. We'll continue to use that in a full virtual model. The Class Dojo is what our 4K and 5K teachers used, and again, we would continue to use that model. We do know that the model that we started in March was really something that was put together relatively quickly, and we got better over time. But we do know that we need to improve if that's a model we're going to go start with, and we're committed to providing that engaging, relevant distance learning to the extent possible to meet those academic standards, provide teachers with professional development. We know that there's going to be changes in attendance and grading compared to the distance learning in the spring of 2020. When we left, we thought we were coming back in a few weeks, and we realized then probably in April we weren't. In this model, we do know that we need to make sure that we're assigning those pieces. What I do want to do is spend a little bit more time talking about the blended model, partially because we haven't, we don't know that model. We know what a face-to-face traditional model looks like. We've had some experience with the online model, so I want to spend some time with this blended model. The blended model for 4K specifically is not different than what we've done in the past. What we did is currently, if we, historically, our, our 4K students went half-days, four days per week with Fridays as no school for professional development and support for our teachers. In this model, they would have two days per week. The idea, again, is to cut the student population in half so that we can social distance and cohort. So we would provide two days a week, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. Those are similar times to what we've done in the past, and again, that's what we would do in the 4K model. The elementary school model, again, trying to reduce our class sizes and provide cohorts would be half-days, AM or PM, four days per week. The elementary model would be eight to eleven-thirty, and then twelve-thirty to four. That would provide us with about an hour to do some cleaning and disinfecting that we would need. There's some conversations, if this is the model tomorrow, at a Personnel Committee meeting, to add some staff that we might need to help support us with this cleaning and disinfecting, but that's the model. The focus, again, will be our core exploring and engaging in our, our math and English language skills, providing social studies and science topics. So the focus is going to be a half-day of instruction face-to-face with half of the kids. The adults will move into the classrooms instead of the students moving to the adults. Lunches would be provided in their classroom. Friday would be that teacher collaboration time and support, because we want to make sure that we're staying on task, cleaning and sanitizing, and providing some additional opportunities for our students. Again, that face-to-face time focuses on math, English language arts, and the social, emotional learning. They would have one special per day. And again, that would come into their classroom, art, music, fayed. We try to do as much outside as we can in physical education and support counseling library as well. The middle school model has had some tweaks based on some feedback we had. The cohort groups are the same. We would have one-third of our students each day. And again, when you look at our schools, we look at about five hundred fifty or so in, in Washington, or Wilson, and six hundred in Wilson in those ranges. So we're trying to have two hundred students or less in each one of those days. That provides us with the opportunity to have a house. Each, each student then would have, one-third of the sixth grade would be on Monday, or Tuesday, one-third of the seventh grade, one-third of the eighth grade. What happens then is we would have distance learning when those students aren't face-to-face on Mondays and Fridays. And again, opportunities for our teachers to plan and connect individually to support students, and obviously that deep cleaning. Some elective scheduled would be at the beginning of the day and allow the families to decide how they want to participate in those. We do know that there would be some limitations in regards to how We do know that there would be some limitations in regards to how those elective pieces would work. Partially because there are three periods throughout the day that kids can take elective courses in each grade. And with that, um, we have, uh, the same number of teachers that we had in the past, uh, to do the elective. So students will have, um, electives, but they may not have the robust choices that they had in the past. Because in the past, they had every other day electives and now they will only have one day. So in the past, we talked about this in the middle school, they may have had six electives. Right now, they would potentially have three electives. And again, we would give some opportunities to shift those on a monthly basis, but that's just an overview. Um, we'd work in cores. And again, the idea is to, for four teachers to have thirty to forty students divided evenly between those four teachers. And then each house would have two teachers in sixth grade and has fifteen to twenty students divided evenly between those two teaching the subjects. Um, and the elective teachers would be assigned for a house for those elective periods. And again, trying to push in and can continue to cohort, um, our teachers move from room to room with students. Um, and again, have those kids in the house in the same instructional period. Um, the high school.
Mark, Mark, before you move on to high school, I have a couple of questions about elementary and middle school, if that's all right. Or do you want me to save them till the end?
Um, yeah, we can do it now. Absolutely.
Okay. So I had emailed you a question and, and you answered it really well over email about, um, for elementary. Why, why you all were looking at half days, um, all four days a week instead of like a Monday, Tuesday for one group and a Wednesday, Thursday? Can you walk through that? Cause I think you explained it pretty well to me, but I think there's probably people interested.
Sure. So the idea about, um, providing face to face, and we had lots of different conversations. But the rationale behind four days per week half days is that if I am providing, if I'm a teacher and I have, um, this, half the students on Monday, Tuesday, and then the other half on Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday. The students who I, I have to be committed four days a week to providing instruction. And I'm not going to be able to provide online or virtual instruction on the two days when students aren't in my class. Because I still have a full, I have a half a class, whether it's a half a class or a full class, I'm still teaching all day. So while those other students aren't in school, I can't be working with those students because I'm working with the ones that are in my class right now. And so I think the burden for, for our staff would be not feasible. While I'm working, you know, you can imagine if I've got ten or I've got sixteen kids in my class, I need to be focused on those ten or sixteen all day. I'm not going to be able to be doing Google meets and responding to kids who aren't in school, who are getting virtual learning the other two days. So I felt like it just wouldn't work well and kids would only get two full days and nothing else the rest of the week.
Thanks. I know that question for some folks that are most likely listening. Um, the other question I had, um, for the electives for middle school, you said those would be kind of bookends, maybe before. Is that outside of school time, like before seven forty-five and after three, or within that same time period just couched in there?
Within the same time period, there would also be one during the middle of the day that kids could take. I think the idea would be in, in some cases, parents might be less comfortable with how often and how much time they're spending at school. So that's what we're saying. There could be some options. But yes, it starts the beginning of the day and the end of the day. And there's also one in the middle, you know, and again, depends on if you're in sixth, seventh or eighth grade. Because we don't combine them all at the same time. But yes, that, that's how it would, it's not a before school or after school.
And then my last question for middle school was, um, you had mentioned that the number is now up to potentially thirteen students plus a teacher in the, in the classroom. Um, I know there's quite a few smaller rooms in Washington and so I have concern, would we still be able to maintain the six feet? In particular, when it's lunchtime and masks are removed.
So, yeah, it's a great question. Um, I, I think there's a lot of questions about, um, how many are in a class? And we would really be looking at seven to ten, if at all feasible. Uh, some of it will depend on if in fact, we come to a blended model. We do know we still are going to offer a virtual model. And by offering, um, a virtual model, that will take some of the students out of the traditional classes that are going into blended. So depending on how many are a hundred percent virtual, and again, if we went to a blended model, if that number seventeen percent, we'll easily be able to have seven to ten kids. The seven to ten came from us basically taking the, the, the courses and trying to split them based on the number of classes of kids we had. Um, so yes, and, and it would also tell you that, um, we are not going to put students in an environment that would not be, uh, meeting the standards of six foot social distancing, wearing masks and being able to keep them apart. So there might be some classrooms that we would have to say are off limits and other ones that we're going to use more regularly. Um, so I, I guess that.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mark, I have some questions. Hello?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mark, I also have some questions, uh, in particular, uh, at the elementary level. First off, I, I, I think that, um, having kids come in, you know, it's four days a week, even on half days, gives us an opportunity to face to face reinforce the core instruction that's taking place. And I think there's a lot of value in that. I was wondering, certainly, you know, it's half days, AM and PM sessions has to cause some nightmares for transportation. Has that, uh, has that been worked out or still working on that?
Yes, I, I've had, uh, regular conversations with, uh, our bus company. I, I gave him a preliminary, um, map of what, um, middle of the day routes look like. So we currently have midday routes. Um, we will make it work. I, I think the transportation piece will be a little unique, um, based on who is, is going to be in, in the morning and who is going to be in the afternoon. Um, but one of the things that I do know is that there would be less students on the bus. So the whole idea of being able to socially distance them is much easier with half of the population coming to school than it is with the whole population coming to school. So there are some, some positives as you think through the process. I mean, we didn't probably get into the intricacies, but when you can think about the last fourteen days and almost meeting every day and trying to tweak these, those are pieces that, you know, our teams, uh, did a great job of thinking through because we can social distance half of the kids on the bus. We probably can't social distance a bus full of everybody who's going to one building. So, um, there'll be some uniquenesses there. Uh, we'll also know that some parents will choose to take their kid and, and to school that currently is a model. And, and we would encourage that if people want to, uh, drive their, their son or daughters. Um, we have a number of elementary schools that are, are walking schools. So to be honest with you, Madison, Franklin and Jefferson, the majority of those students walk.
Okay.
So.
One of the, uh, one of the concerns, Mark, uh, that, that, that teachers expressed at the elementary level was the sharing of materials. You know, it's, uh, um, you know, centers and, and guided reading materials. Has that been further discussed?
Yeah. So the idea would be we would share, uh, as little as possible. Um, but I think that there is definitely going to be, uh, some, some deeper conversations about what's possible and how we might have to teach some things differently. Um, and then again, the other idea would be using the information and research that we have about how we're transmitting the disease. So, you know, our research is telling us that it's, uh, often an airborne disease and, uh, although we're going to deep clean, uh, things like book covers and books could be wiped down so that students could use, you know, we have classroom libraries. I, I don't want to say that we're going to not read books if we're coming back face to face. We're going to have to work through what that looks like. And how do we wipe down a book so that the next child can look at a book from the library? So I'm confident that we will have, um, we have those thoughts and practices in place. But some of it is, it is definitely going to be, we're going to have to work it out when we look at, you know, math manipulatives, for example. Um, and those little brick things that we use. We do have the ability to clean those. Uh, but maybe what we'll do is rather than having a big, huge bin of them, we're going to have each student with, in a plastic bag with their name on them and they're going to use their own. And that's what we're going to do. So it's just some things to think differently about what that looks like. Um, you know, when we think about child's play, um, and you think about what has, what goes on in some of our younger classrooms. You know, there are, uh, playtimes that help that socially emotional that we'll have to go through. And, and, and some of them we might say, we're not going to be able to use this and others, we're going to have to actually, uh, work hard on cleaning.
Yeah. Speaking of playtime, um, will some of those little kids have access to recess time while they're in school?
All of the, all of the K five will have recess.
What would that look like in regard to, you know, the social distancing?
Yeah. So staggered times, uh, so that we wouldn't have multiple, you know, um, again, you have a smaller class, but we wouldn't have multiple grades out at the same time. Uh, some of it is going to be teaching kids how to be, uh, socially responsible. And some of it is being honest with our families about, we're going to let kids go out and swing on the swings and, and run around and play. But it is probably likely that someone is going to cross paths. And what really we're looking at is the consistent time spent. Um, so physical touch is a piece we want to avoid. But, um, fifteen minutes is, is the research that we're getting about is, is the extended amount of time. And so when we're talking about running past or, or, you know, circling around or on a merry-go-round, um, you know, we definitely want to make sure we're keeping kids safe, but we also know that it's not going to be likely for us to say to kids, you can't go outside and play. We have to provide some supports for kids to go out. And some of it is just training, um, and, uh, giving them a brain break, right? I mean, that, that's going to be healthy for kids. So that's still part of the plan.
Yeah. One, one final question. Sorry. Uh, you know, at the middle school and high school in particular, you know, it's, um, um, is there going to be increased accountability in regards to those that are participating? Are we going to be doing in, in attendance? You know, how, uh, how might that work for the district?
So the answer is yes. Uh, the increased accountability means, uh, if we have a blended model, you need to show up when school, when your time is there. And, uh, our teachers are going to be working with you on, uh, the, when you're not there those other days so that we can account for you. We will definitely be having a greater responsibility. We, we're going to have to give grades to students. Not, I have to, students will receive grades. And, um, so I think that will help support from the get-go. They know that they're going to have online instruction. They're going to have some opportunities for face to face and we'll talk about that. That's my next slide. It's both through high school, what that looks like. Um, but yes, I mean, that's a, an important factor. We will need our parents and our school community to help us. Because, you know, again, I would articulate that face to face is the best model. And so when kids are away, some kids are away, right? And they're not thinking about school and they're thinking about other things. So we do have to work hard on trying to keep kids engaged. And that's what's supposed to happen when our teachers, um, are face to face and working with them virtually. Cause they're going to work on that engagement. And yes, there will be accountability.
Mark, I have a quick question about elective choices for middle school. Um, you mentioned that they'll have a reduced number, I believe, when we're going virtual or on the blended model. So what happens when we go back face to face? Will they still have that same number of elective choices? Or will that increase? Will it not increase until after semester? How will that work?
Well, what I would tell you for the middle school model is that it would increase the time that, once they return back because we would then go back to an A day, B day. So currently our, our schedule says like Monday, I have, you know, these options and Tuesday have these options. And Wednesday I go back to the ones I had on Monday. Because we don't have an every other day, it wouldn't happen. So it, it likely, it's going to happen automatically. There might be, and the reason I say it's going to take a little time is that there might be, have to do some reorganization in saying, when students filled out their, um, their class interest list, they put priorities. And so we have a matrix that says, here's what your schedule looks like. Um, and again, we want to make sure that we're trying to match that with what they have. So it, it, the day they return, you know, the plan it would be, a- as we hear are on the twenty-eighth of July, right? It could change is that we would go back to an A day, B day, and it doesn't have to be at semester for the middle school. It, for the high school, you almost have to make a change at the quarter or the semester because of the grades that they receive. It's like a middle school, not that grades aren't important, but they don't get credits. Right? At the high school, they receive credit and they need twenty-four credits to graduate from the Manitowoc Public School District. So we need to make sure that we're working through that. The elementary is probably easier to shift because they don't have every other day courses. They have art, music and fayed. And so we could start quicker. The shift would be just giving parents enough time to plan.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to go back and, um, uh, work through a few more slides, talk a little bit about the high school and then our protocols. And then definitely, uh, continue to take, um, feedback. So. Ahead here to the high school then. So the high school, again, what we're trying to do is divide our students up into fours. And the fours being those, uh, two, four different cohorts of three hundred and seventy-five kids. Those three hundred and seventy-five kids won't be just grade level. They'll be ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. And, uh, we'll go, those students would go two days per week, either in the morning or in the afternoon. Uh, Friday would continue to be that distance learning for students and teacher collaboration time, providing that deep cleaning and supporting students online. Um, the cohorts would be organized into grade level house groups of twenty to twenty-four students with four core grade level teachers assigned to each house group. And I'm giving you a lot of information here. So if you have questions at the end, I can get there. But basically what's going to happen is that house is going to be split, split into two classrooms. And those classrooms and houses are going to grade level. So there's a ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade. Those core teachers will have ten to twelve students. And again, what they're going to do is support the students while they're face to face instruction, support what they're getting online. And again, try to build relationships. In some, in cases, if I'm a geometry teacher in a tenth grade group, I might have students who are in algebra or students who are in algebra two, just because of the nature of what's in that tenth grade group. But because I'm working with my colleague, I can support an algebra student or an algebra two student, even if it happens to not be mine. And I will know what the assignments are and can provide that kid with some support.
So is that like a flipped classroom model where they're doing a lot of the learning on their own and then coming in with more questions and, and guidance like that?
Yes. The instructional practices is actually going to happen in the virtual piece. And the two days per week is supposed to be giving them check-ins and feedbacks on what's happening. So you're absolutely right. That's what we're looking at with the high school model. The rationale behind that is multiple, but the simplest explanation is that there are multiple certifications in the high school. Throughout, eve- even through some departments. So in science, there's a chemistry, a biology, a general science. And so even though those teachers can support that, in order to create class sizes with small groups, we have to have the online as the instructional practice and the in-face to face as the support. That's what's going to happen in those. Um, to talk to you, you know, we talked a little bit about some of those midday transportation pickups, um, trying to, um, you know, figure out that student, elementary students and, and how they're going, childcare needs. Um, you know, we continue, I've had some conversations with some childcare partners and, and what that looks like. Um, and knowing that our high school and middle school students in the past were at homes in some cases, helping care, care for those kids. What we will do though is we have the ability to coordinate house, household schedules. So that if people want mornings or afternoons in the elementary, we can blend that with what's happening at the high school. Uh, and the middle school, uh, we can work with that, those families as well. We do know that face to face learning is, is absolutely a, a, an important part of what we're doing. And the social and social wellness is something that we want to make sure we're continuing to monitor. Um, we have, we'll continue to provide those mental services with a community partner. Come into our buildings and support that. Um, our four K to twelve teachers are planning those social emotional learning lessons. Make sure we're taking time to check in with people and work through that. We'll still have counselors and they'll be working harder than ever, trying to connect with individual and small groups, whether that's virtually or face to face. And, uh, you know, our my mental wellness coordinator, Michael Morgan's continued to provide supports and professional development for that. Um, Joyce has done a nice job of communicating the EAP, uh, sports to continue to be offered for our staff. And we do see a number of staff using that more than we had in the past. Uh, a few more slides here and then we'll, uh, get forward to answering. Uh, we definitely want to make sure that we're watching, uh, and, and continuing to provide, uh, health monitoring. We're telling folks, you got to stay at home if you're symptomatic. We've got a, a staff protocol we take, um, prior to coming into the buildings. Um, our students are, we're prepared to take temperatures. And we also have a, a separate room for, uh, symptomatic students. Um, I articulate that, that if I am a third grader and I have a skin knee or a loose tooth, we want you to be in a different place than someone who comes down with a fever or. we want you to be in a different place than someone who comes down with a fever or, um, COVID symptomatics. So we're, we have those in place as well. We've articulated that there are generally five ways to help support or mitigate, um, the spread of the virus. Social distancing is one, wearing a mask is another one. Uh, hand sanitizing and washing your hands regularly is another one, and then the sanitizer is another. So we know that wearing a mask will support, uh, one of the best ways to mitigate the, the disease. Will require all of our staff and all of our students to wear a mask. Will help students help educate children on how to wear the mask. Um, and again, there will be some exceptions for students and staff who have medically, um, situations that won't allow them. And we could potentially provide some, uh, mask breaks. We're working with our nurses on that to see what it looks like in areas where. Um, we talked a little bit about the bus piece. We do know that we will use. At the end of the day, we've reduced our class sizes in this model to provide more spacing. Teachers are going to stay in the classroom and rotate, uh, instead of the kids moving. Our meals will be delivered and eaten in the classrooms in individual packaging. Talked about reducing the opportunity to share objects. We know that washing and hygiening is important. We've ordered over four hundred hand sanitizing stations that are, are, uh, in place or have been delivered and will be installed before school starts. Uh, we know that we have, uh, to teach people about that. So we've got in-friendly signage about hand hygiene and social distancing and symptoms. We want to make sure that, uh, we've increased our protocols for social, for, uh, meetings. And we're prepared to go through the high-touch places along with all of the student workstations. Uh, we've identified ways to increase our ability to communication and make sure that our measures are taken to, to include that. We've got the safety decals and those pieces prepared to have. You've seen those all around places. Plexiglasses are in spaces where buildings have the most public. Those installed already. Um, we will restrict visitors to coming to the building with the exception of those who need to do some work. Typically, the example I use is we have a water main break or something like that. We need someone from the city. We'll test them, check them before they come in, but those would be the visitors that would come in. And then again, a regular communication plan to the district and the schools, making sure that parents, uh, the board and our staff all know about what our plans are as we move forward. So our next steps, um, obviously the board, um, has a, a decision to make. Um, we'll continue to provide opportunities for families to register. Um, what our idea would be is that if, if we did do a blended model, they would have an opportunity to register for a full distance if they wanted to do that. Um, we would have to then work on implementing some of those plans and train our teachers, provide those regular communications and continue to monitor that health results. Obviously, that's the big key is, is just monitoring where we are today. It's significantly different than where we were June twenty-eighth, and it might be different than what happens on August twenty-eighth. So no matter what happens with the board, we have to be nimble, uh, with our plan and be ready to make adjustments as.
Mark, uh, going back to distance learning, if a family chooses to go full distance learning, who will teach that?
So, um, our teachers, uh, would be the first priority. And, and again, I, I would tell you that the model would be, um, if depending on how many students, we would first ask our parents if they wanted full distance learning and then ask our staff who might be interested in teaching full distance learning and try to match that together. Um, we definitely have curriculum and materials that we can provide supports for that. But we would not likely hire somebody outside to do that. That would be our own staff working with those students and their families.
So a teacher that is doing face-to-face in classroom would not be expected to do anything with virtual learning?
They would do virtual learning with their students in their class. So, but not with somebody who is not in their class. And this would, like, if you were, chose a hundred percent virtual, you wouldn't be in my class or your class. So I would not be the one providing the virtual learning for that student.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that a teacher was not expected to do, um, you know, strictly virtual learning versus their own students who are doing in, in face-to-face. I just wanted to keep those separate.
I, I, ideally, we would have a, a match of the number of teachers who wanted to be virtual with the number of families who wanted to be virtual. I think that's probably a pie in a sky a bit, so, uh, you know, there might be more than one and more than the other, but we'll figure it out. I, I, I'm confident that we can do that. We have resources, material. We've done some of those things before, but the classroom teachers who are working with a classroom of morning and afternoon or sixth, seventh grade, eighth grade or high school will be responsible for the distance learning of only those students when they're not face-to-face.
Mark, did we have, um, on the survey seventeen percent of our families saying they did not want to have any of face-to-face learning? Was that seventeen percent?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay. So what percentage of students do we need to go completely virtual in order to allow the rest to go completely face-to-face? Like, what would our number breakdown be? That it would be a safe environment for our students to go on a daily basis, face-to-face? What kind of phase, you know, what kind of numbers do we need?
Right. So what? Yep, it does. Very good question. We've prepared for all of our students in a blended model to come back in a blended model.
Yeah.
So the numbers that you saw, so for example, if you take an elementary classroom and, um, if you have twenty-five students in that classroom and then half of them would be there, we would have twelve. Some of them will have eighteen, you know, eighteen, and they would be nine. So any students who would choose to be one hundred percent virtual would make those numbers smaller.
Right.
Does, does that make sense? So we don't need, so, uh, it's, the numbers that I'm showing you are, are based on the numbers that we know now. Uh, you know, and again, because we don't know how many, if in fact, we have, you know, two or three hundred students who choose a hundred percent virtual model, uh, that would just reduce the class sizes. Now, at some point, we may then take students and combine them. We used to have, you know, maybe, um, Meredith has a class and Dick has a class. And because they both had forty to start, because now there's only twenty left, maybe we ask one of, we, and we ask, hey, does anybody want to teach virtual? Maybe Meredith says, hey, I'll take virtual and Dick will take the twenty kids, all that, ten in the morning and ten in the afternoon. Those are the logistics that we have to work out in this model, but we don't need ten percent or five percent or some percent to not come back in order for us to be able to do a blended.
But what would it take for us to have hundred face-to-face if we had some students completely virtual versus one hundred percent face-to-face? Do we have any information for that?
So I'm just going to try to do the math right now. Um, so if, if you wanted to do social distancing, meaning that we would try to keep six foot and we would try to do cohorts, we would, the best we could probably do is half of the school at a time. Even that is a stretch, right? Because Lincoln's going to have seven hundred and fifty kids. So that would mean that I would need twenty-five hundred to three thousand kids go one hundred percent virtual.
Okay.
I probably would need half of our population to do that in order to go one hundred percent face-to-face. And be able to socially distance in cohort.
Okay. Mark, I've got a question about, um, about face masks. Will, uh, will the district be providing face masks for all students and teachers? Would they be throwaway masks? And I'm also wondering about how, uh, how will teachers reinforce or, or enforce, you know, the wearing of masks?
So we have ordered masks and have, uh, they have been delivered and we're distributing those to all the buildings. Um, regardless if we start the school year in a blended or a face-to-face or blended or a hundred percent virtual, we're coming back at some point. So face masks are not going to be, go away in the near future. Um, so we have, uh, ordered, um, every staff member has, uh, access to them. And they are a, um, a reoccurring, they're cloth face masks that can be used over and over again. Um, we have, uh, the state has, uh, contributed, um, ten thousand masks of which we should be taking, um, inventory on within the next weeks, I would imagine. Uh, we've been confirmed that we're going to get those. Um, we may choose to order more. Those are cloth masks. Again, I haven't seen or felt them, so I don't know what they look like exactly. Um, so the idea would be, we will be providing students with masks. We've also put masks on the, um, the back-to-school, uh, um, supply list. Uh, because we would ask parents to consider that. Um, so that's the question. Is two enough? Probably not. We may, they need to continue to provide more. We'll have extras. We, I would tell you this, um, we do not want students to be eliminated by not wearing a mask. But we also know that wearing a mask protects the student and everybody else around that student uh, from passing the virus. So the, the, the message is this, if we're in, um, uh, chemistry class, we say you must wear goggles and a gown. If we're in a tech class, we say you must wear safety goggles and do safety protection for yourself and for the well-being of others. While in school, we know that wearing a mask provides protection for you and for others. We are requiring you to wear a mask. We do not want to eliminate you from school because you're not choosing to wear a mask. But we'll work with families and continue to do that. If you feel or family feels so strongly that they can't do that, we would recommend that they choose the virtual option. Because wearing a mask is an important part. It, if, if as a community, and I've heard this multiple times from multiple healthcare, if we all wore a mask for two months, we would, we would really make a significant difference in the spread. We're just not there yet. But in school, we ha, we are, again, if I am going to spend an X amount of time, and in, in this case, we're saying three to four hours, right? And I'm six feet away from somebody, but we know that six feet in, as all adults, we're human beings and want to be social. That is different than me passing by somebody in a grocery store, filling up gas. When you're spending an hour or two or three next to somebody, if that person is positive, the likelihood of you being positive is way greater. And if you don't have a mask on, it's even tenfold. So we want to try to mitigate that piece, um, in the best possible manner. So we'll work with our teachers, um, just like, you know, again, some of the experts are on hand, tech ed, family consumer ed, chemistry, biology. We have rules about how to wear safety equipment. And when you don't do that, we say you can't participate. Um, so that would be the message. And again, I'm also well aware that there were students who have tummy aches during math class. And this would provide me with a better excuse to not have a tummy ache. I just am not going to wear my mask, right? And then I'm out of math. We don't want to eliminate kids, but we also know that the safety piece is, is paramount.
Mark, I appreciate that, um, because that has been the conversation in our house about, you know, um, i- if somebody pulls their mask down in his defiance, um, what is that consequence? So I do appreciate that. Um, what is the notification procedure if someone is positive? And then are those, um, protocol put in place yet about? If we're in a blended model, are, are those ten kids not coming back for two weeks because their classmate was positive?
So, uh, that's where the contact tracing and quarantine comes into place. What I would tell you is that the district won't test, right? If kid comes to us with, uh, COVID-like symptoms, we will take them and hold them and then recommend that they get tested and talk with, uh, their, their healthcare provider about that. We do not have access to test kids. If in fact they are tested, the county is going to be the one who is going to communicate with us and they are going to ask us for the list of students who they may have been in contact with. If they have been in contact with, and again, I, I, this is, I'm not a medical professional, I'm your superintendent, right? But my understanding would be if you have A, been in physical contact or B, been in contact, um, with less than six feet or more than fifteen minutes, you are now likely on a quarantine. And, um, then the health department though will be the ones who will communicate whom is quarantined. Now, we'll, we'll share with the families what that is. But as a school district, we won't say you are quarantined. The county will do that, but they will ask us for the names of the people who might be in that class. And then we'll ask questions like, hey, has this student been in class today? Did they, you know, were they playing tackle football at recess or were they just six feet apart? Those are all the pieces that help us. And if we can say, hey, every kid in that class had a mask on, this is where it is. We likely will be able to reduce the number of kids who we would need to quarantine. If in fact we can't say that and, and they're eating cafeteria and everybody's grouped together, we're going to see a larger number of students who are going to be quarantined.
And then my other question was, um, what, what is the measure you're looking at to be one hundred percent virtual, say, August twenty-eighth? I mean, if we're in a high status right now and granted, the blended model allows us to pivot quickly one way or another. If we approve the blended model today, what i, what are those measures that we're looking at perhaps in a month to say, nope, we need to pivot and go all virtual?
Okay. So I just want to clarify, you said all virtual, not all one hundred percent face-to-face?
Correct.
Okay. You made me nervous about the other question.
Oh, absolutely not. No, 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 no. I got a kid in the game, so, no, we're not going there.
Okay. So what I would tell you is that, um, if we continue to see, uh, an increased elevation in our burden, um, if we increase the positive cases. And I would also tell you that a personal conversation with our local and state health officials, county nurse and county, they would give us guidance. Likely, they would say, Mark, you got to think about this because this is not going well. And then we would, so I am not going to be solely responsible. We do have good data, you know, and some of the data I would tell you are is like number of beds available in your region, right? Um, it's a data point that many, many states and regions are using. It sounds a bit morbid, in all honesty, right? We, we can stay open if in fact we have beds and ventilators available. That's a statistic that people are using. Having said that, I kind of want to wait, try to help before we get to the beds and ventilators. Um, so I would rely heavily on our increased number of cases, right? The positive number of cases, the activity and burden and the advice from our local and state health officials, personally contacting them. They, I have talked to Mary Holliday personally, and our nurses have been in contact with the state, um, nurse as well and from the P I, they would give us quality guidance.
And Meredith, just to add to Mark's comments, the board will meet at least twice before the start. Could be more frequently. Um, so we need to be, we also need to be paying attention to that. We need to weekend call a meeting. Um, to make. Whatever.
Yeah, I watch it every day. I got to.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I didn't understand any of what you just said, Dave, because of the feedback, I think, from having multiple microphones on. So sorry, I missed that.
Okay, Kathy, what I, what I mentioned was that the board will meet at least twice prior to the start of school and we could meet more frequently if necessary. If there are changes to the status of, um, what's going on in our community. Um, so, so it's not, we'll make a decision. We should make a decision today. And then moving forward, we should be prepared to possibly modify, um, whatever decision is made because of circumstances that are occurring.
Okay. One of my concerns is that if we make a decision to go with a, like a modified school day, like we're to the blended school day, that we have the ability to go virtual, a hundred percent virtual very quickly, but we can't go face-to-face very quickly. So I'm just throwing it out there that I have that concern that, so even if we make the decision today to go blended, how apt are we if things decrease and improve that we could go face-to-face with the gaming of the year? I do think the majority of people want us to go face-to-face. And there is that seventeen percent that we were notified about that just will not go face-to-face, uh, no matter what. So I have those concerns. I'm a little surprised by my, uh, take on it right now. But I'm just questioning our ability to react to things improving uh, rather than getting worse.
My response would be, um, that we aren't able to pivot quickly. Like, we're looking at a month now before school starts, and that's why we would need to make a decision and start the school year unless things change. Um, based on the feedback that I'm getting from our health professionals, Um, based on the feedback that I'm getting from our health professionals, that um we are not in a trajectory that is moving towards coming back more face-to-face. We're actually at an increased number of positive cases and percent of positive cases. So I honestly, Kathy, have not had many conversations in the last two weeks about what data points we're gonna use to come back 100% face-to-face in um September, because I haven't seen any data points that says we're getting better. Um, so I, I would tell you that you're correct, there's a concern, it's gonna take us probably four weeks to shift. Probably earlier at the elementary school, we could do it quicker at the elementary middle. The high school likely is gonna need some time because of just the schedule and calendar. Um, we would do everything we can to get back if we are healthy, right? And, and I think what we're, we'd be looking at would be some kind of a vaccination, that would quicken things, but even that, um, we are at the, we are both high at our activity level and high of our burden level. And two weeks ago, we were moderately high at our burden level. So, you know, maybe in two weeks, we get better, that means we're moderately high and high, not even, we're not even at the low, medium yet, or low, we've got. So, and again, the, this, the information I think is, uh, on that is generally every two weeks. So I don't see the data changing, now we could, the board gets to decide, obviously, you could change, you could, we could decide to do whatever, uh, and, and we would implement whatever the board approves, but um I haven't had long conversations about that.
Um, Mark, you know, it's uh, Meredith, you know, it's uh, gave a scenario that, you know, it's August 28th. Would we be able to quickly go to a 100% distance learning if we needed to? Um, my thought is that if we feel that we're moving in that direction, I thi- I think parents need to know as soon as possible, because I think there's a lot of parents that are stressing in regard to how am I gonna meet the needs of my kids, you know, it's when they're not face-to-face in school, you know, and uh, and I think the more lead time parents have, you know, it's uh the better prepared they'll be when we start the school year.
I, again, I'm, I'm surprised at my take on this at this moment, but um I, I question that we are taking away all of, I shouldn't say all, but we're definitely diminishing our capability in educating our students in our district, for sure, by going in a blended model versus going face-to-face. For something that is considered the flu within our area has a 0.8% mortality rate. I, it's not that it's polio or leprosy, I know it's highly contagious, but I just question that we're doing something so drastic or, you know, that we're taking this away from our kids for something that is considered the flu. And I, I see the other side of it too, I will say that, because my own family 100 years ago was affected by the Spanish flu, with two people dying from it, so um I see that side too, but just, gosh, it, it is the flu. Um, anyway, I just, I throw that out there, I'm, I'm so not sure where I am right now, so.
I'm not sure if you, I, I, I guess that was comment, or are you, are you asking me a question?
I don't know, I just, I don't know what that is. I just need to throw that out there, because I feel like I'm vacillating so much, and we're, we've made plans so conservatively, which I understand, and let, many ways I'd like to err on the side of caution, right? But on the other hand, we're talking about our kids in our school district and educating them. And it is definitely, we all have agreed, it's not as good as face-to-face. So are we taking away too much from our kids because of the potential for flu and spreading flu around when it has a small mortality rate? And that's what I'm vacillating with as far as even voting on whether we go to, go blended or go back or go virtual. Um, I don't know, I just had to comment too, so maybe everyone kinda knows where I'm, what I'm struggling with, so.
Um, Kathy, uh, one of the things that I, 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 I guess I'm looking at is, I really feel like we should start out with the blended model. I, I mean, that, that's where I'm coming from. And yes, it's gonna take time to change things around, but this, you know, this plan is not set in stone. I mean, we can change it, and that's, that's the good part. I mean, it, we uh, you know, but I think we have to start somewhere, and I think the blended model is probably the best place to start. So, you know, I don't, but that's my opinion.
And, and Liz, I would, I would echo that, um, Kathy, I, I'll, I'll just speak to that. We, we can look at all the data we want from other sources, which is our community, the state. We don't know how it's going to impact what we do in the school, because we don't have that data, we don't know that. And un- unfortunately, that might not be good data, but the only way we're going to know is to do some face-to-face. But we can move then forward from that. If it works out really well, we can then move to, to a full face-to-face if we can. But one of the, in our mission statement, it, it's, you know, we, we talk about the safety of our students and our staff, that's, that's gotta be important. And with this blended model, we can do that. If we go face-to-face and it falls out, you know, we fall on our face, that's not, not a good direction to go, but um, but I think, again, we can collect our own data. We'll find out within a couple of weeks, how is it working, and then move forward. And as Liz said, we can always, we can always meet, the board can meet at any time if we have to and make modifications. I think we, we all have an understanding of, of what's being presented to us. I think we, we, we know, we're all intelligent enough to be able to figure these things out. I mean, we're not living in a vacuum, so if we need to, we can modify it. This isn't something that we're saying today, that we're gonna push this forward for the next year or whatever, and we can't change because we don't want to, that's not happening. Um, but we do need to give parents and students an opportunity to be prepared a month from now, that they'll have to wear masks, that they'll have to do this and that, at least it does give them adequate time. And, and I said this before, I don't think we can come up with a plan as a result of what's occurring right now in society that will make anyone completely happy. And I don't think that should be our goal, we can't do that. And there will be people who, who already have fixed their minds on how we should go, and they won't like it. But that's part of being an elected official, we have to make a decision, and I believe we need to do it today, regardless of what it is, and then move forward from that, as opposed to continuing to have these questions and keep pushing it off, but we can change it. Maybe next week, next week we get together and we say, hey, you know, we can do more, um, or. I mean, I'd like to look at it that way, but make a decision and then live with it, and then be prepared to, if you need to, cuz you get better information to change that.
Dave.
There you go.
I, I do want to also say that I really, really appreciate all of the effort that's taken for Mark and the entire staff that has put all of this together, it's an extreme amount of planning. Uh, no one saw this coming, we all know it's extra hours, extra time, and a lot of thought from a lot of different sources, and I really appreciate that. So I think that has to be said too, um, so thank you for that. Um, I just, like you said, I'm just throwing that out there as a question, cuz I, I, I battled it within myself. So, because we get so many di- different pieces of information all over the place, and I wanted to hear more about everyone, what everyone was thinking, so, thank you.
Dave, Dave, I, I need to apologize, I have a 1:30 meeting, you know, that I need to connect with. And um I was wondering, you know, first off, you know, is can the discussion in regards to um academic achievement gap and equity be, be um, you put on our next agenda? And um do we need to take a vote, you know, it's on moving ahead in regard to uh, um, in regard to our back-to-school plan?
Yeah, thanks, and um, I'll, I'll get to the equity thing, that's not such a big issue for this meeting, so that can be, there's things that can be moved forward. In regard to the return to school, um, my position is we need to make a decision today. How we're going to move forward, at least from today, so that we can get that message out, we'll get feedback on it. And again, maybe we need to meet again soon to modify it because of other information we get, but I believe we need to let our, our families know. Other school districts are getting their messages out now, some are waiting for school districts like us to make a decision. But I, I just think we need time, um, I know, I know kids, they, they need time to adjust, especially with the mask, there's, you know, those types of things aren't part of our normal everyday life right now. And if we're going to make it part of that, we gotta give them time, we really.
Can I have one more question before we vote? Sorry.
Yeah, we don't even have a motion on the floor yet, so.
Okay. Again, Mark, I really appreciate what you all have put together, it's, it's a phenomenal amount of work in the last couple of weeks that, that none of us ever suspected we'd be talking about. Um, I have to admit, I'm one of the 17%, and I'll just say that flat out. However, with this blended model, I'm feeling more comfortable as we've walked through it now, over the parent meeting and this meeting, I'm, I'm feeling much more comfortable with that. Um, you know, who knows what I'll be feeling like in August. Um, so with that, um, if, if individuals do choose the blended model, they get into the mix of things, and it just, um, student is feeling anxious, or parents are feeling anxious, is there an option to go into the 100% virtual?
Yeah, so we'll always work with families about, you know, trying to uh support what their needs are. I would just say that the interest is not for people to go back and forth and back and forth. So if, if someone is, is in, in the blended and they wanna go virtual, we're happy to move them to the virtual, we'll do that. But we can't continue to move them back and then back and then back. And then the same thing, if I go 100% virtual, we'd be happy to have them then go into the blended model, but then they need to stick there, we just can't, don't have the resources if we back and forth, but yes.
And I appreciate that, yeah.
Always creating circumstances that might require people to do that, but I would articulate that if we have a student who is in class and um has to be quarantined for whatever reason, you're gonna provide online instruction for that student while they're home. So, you know, we're prepared to do that. Um, I would say, you know, as much as we absolutely know, we've never opened school in a pandemic. So there are gonna be things that we're not gonna do very well on September 1, by October 1, we'll be really good at it. So, you know, yes, we'll give people.
Dave, can I just make one other comment?
Yes.
Okay, so if we vote and approve this today, and then it um, it's our plan, but we can modify it uh based on information that comes in, but we will also get input from families and staff about what we've approved today, is that still open?
Well, I would, I would suspect that we will receive um feedback from certainly parents or the community, um, regardless of what our decision is, and, and that's, there's always a value to that. Whether, whether I agree with someone or not, I appreciate getting that feedback, because then I know how people feel, you know, they tell you. Um, it's not so easy sometimes with emails, because the message isn't always as clear as you'd like it to be, but, but I think we need to be receptive to that, and we also need to be receptive to what administration is looking at. Because they're the ones who have to do the jobs in the school, you know, we're outside of that. So, that's the feedback available, we should at least be aware of it and, and consider it.
Okay, I also think there is value in getting input from our staff, because after all, they're going to be the ones in the buildings, in the classrooms, doing the face-to-face work. So I would really like to have some of their input, um, I, I just think that that's a value as well.
Well, and, yeah, and the best I can do right now is encourage it to those who are watching. I don't, I don't have a real method to get, you know, that message to everyone, but um, maybe others have a better way of doing it, but we certainly can get the message out that we're willing to listen to feedback, and how is this working? And what is, what is and what is not working, and certainly, those that are in school are, have better information than those who are not.
Sure, and that's very important, so I would encourage staff to come forward and, and let their feelings be known.
Thank you. Okay, what I would do now is, Kathy, did you wanna add something?
No, I was just saying, I was completely in agreement with Lisa, it's really important that we get.
What I would do is I would ask for a motion on how we were going to return to school. We have, right, two options that were presented today. I'm, I mean, there are, there is the option of going face-to-face, um, but I'm not going to suggest any of those right now, but I would like a motion and a second on how you believe we should move forward to return to school. Would someone like to make a motion?
I am going to make a motion that we go forward with the blended model that was presented to us today.
Thank you, do we have a second to that motion?
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a second, now I would open that up for discussion, if we need any more discussion than what we've already had, but you're certainly welcome to ask questions, or.
Sorry, do we need to tweak that motion to include the option for virtual learning and the option to amend that decision in the near future if needed?
Well, we don't need, you wouldn't need to put that in the motion, because that can be done at any time. What we decide today can be changed at a, at the next meeting that we have, whenever that was scheduled for.
But we don't have to include that 100% virtual piece, the way that was worded?
You mean, you mean the way that it's worded in the blended model? That you could amend, right, and you could amend the motion to include something or to, or to modify something, yes.
Okay, then I would move we modify Liz's motion to include the option of 100% virtual in addition to the blended model being proposed.
Okay, do we have a second to that, to the amendment to the original motion?
I second that.
Okay, now, there's discussion on, on what's being amended here. And I would, I'll, I'll give Liz the first opportunity, since she made the original motion. Do you have any questions on, on Meredith's amendment?
No, not really, because I, I, I just thought it was, I just thought it was part of the blended, um, you know, but this is good. It's clarification, I like that.
Yeah, it is, it is clarification, it really is, even though we more or less have that option, I, I'm okay with that. Any other discussion on the amendment to the original motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we go back to the original motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 No, okay, thank you, and thank you, Dick, for hanging around, I know it's 1:39, so you need to go.
I do.
Okay, until further notice, this is where we're at, and hopefully, um, hopefully, parents um will receive the message and be able to make whatever modifications they need to make within that time. So then I'll move on to unfinished business, and rather than getting into a, a discussion over that right now, I'll, I'll move that forward to the next meeting, there is one thing that I want to do today. And um I would like for us to form an ad hoc committee on equity. An ad hoc, ad hoc committee is, is not a regular committee, it would only meet during the time it's necessary. I would call that an equity advisory committee. We don't currently address equity directly in our, in our school district, and we know that we have achievement gaps within certain groups of students. And my idea on that uh advisory committee would be to include two board members, which would include the board president, our superintendent, a student, a teacher, a parent of a student, and a community member at large. It'd be a seven-member group, they would meet to come up with ideas to, just, simply would be an advisory group. They would come up with ideas, um, which helps us as a board, because we would have input from outside sources to come up with ideas on how to improve and how to address equity in our school district. Um, anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Um, then I just ask for a motion and a second to approve an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc equity advisory committee. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll move the.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, yes, I second.
Any further discussion on that? Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, and I, and this will come forward again in the future, so this isn't um something that we're just going to let go for a while. Um, it's very important. Then we'll move on to new business, and we have our academic standards, um. I believe we have that, that was brought up on our screen, Pam, you're going to address that for us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll hear after all that, huh? Okay.
So this is the annual process that, um, the board basically just needs to, um, confirm the adoption of the standards. That we are going to use as a school district. The memo that you received in Board Book just reflects that we follow the Wisconsin academic standards. With the exception of our six through twelve science curriculum, which is aligned to the next gen science standards. Um, the next gen standards actually came out prior to the Wisconsin model academic standards for science. And our team two years ago went through and did a review of the Wisconsin standard. And found out that, um, they're pretty well aligned and therefore, um, the team felt as though since our curriculum was already aligned to the next gen standards. That they would move forward with that, so that would be the only, um, variation from the academic standards. I can let you know that, uh, the E L A standards were, um, just updated this summer. And therefore, um, our team will be taking a look at those. Social studies was last year and our team continues to engage in taking a look at that. Um, our art team will be looking at their art standards again to, to, to try to, uh, make sure that their curriculum is aligned well with that. So we have a lot of teams in the district that are continuing to dig in as the new standards come through for their departments.
Okay, hey, do we have any other questions for Pam regarding the academic standards for the next school year? If not, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve that, um, the, the academic standards for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
I so move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're past that.
Happy birthday, Pam.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Uh, uh, yeah, a day after Bugs Bunny's birthday, but he's quite a bit older.
Right.
There you go, okay, any other business? I don't have any that I can think of right now that I'm recall, so. Um, do we have any future meetings? I know there's a personnel committee meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, I believe. Does, um, do any of the other directors have a meeting, Pam or Jason, do you have a curriculum coming up? Chris, maybe with a, uh, building grounds or Sean?
Within the next, uh, week or two, the finance and budget.
Okay, okay, and you'll, you'll just contact the, um, committee members and set up a meeting, okay? Probably virtual, is that what you're looking at?
Committee's choice.
Okay, okay, well, I think Richard is the committee chair and he's not here right now, so we won't, we won't make a decision for him. Um, unless it would be more, Jason?
I'm just, I'm sorry, uh, the next curriculum committee is scheduled August twentieth.
Okay, thank you, and, and we'll have a board meeting prior to that, so. Um, otherwise, our next scheduled meeting would be, I believe it's Tuesday, maybe August twelfth? That sound right? Eleventh, make it the eleventh, okay, make it Tuesday and we'll go with the eleventh. Otherwise, if there's nothing add to today's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Anybody want a second, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much and good luck.